I'd like to call to order the voting session for April the 7th, 2025. And we'll have the roll call, please. No, I'm sorry. The invocation will be by Key Street Church of God of Prophecy Pastor Anthony Kane, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Daniel Beatty. Please stand.
Let's pray together. By the way, thank you, Lord, for this time that we have together. Thank you, Lord, for this gathering. Or we just ask tonight, God, that you would be welcomed in this place. We ask that your presence would be made known in this place. Father, we ask that you would just bless everything that is said, everything that is done. God may it be done in honor of you who are here tonight. I thank you, Lord, for every commissioner, Lord, here tonight, our mayor. Would I ask your blessings upon them? And blessings on our conversation and everything that is voted upon tonight. May it bring you glory and bring you honor. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Before you speak, remember to hit the red button. And remember that after you finish speaking, it's still a hot mic until you turn it off. We'll now have the roll call, please.
Alfred.
Here.
Cry.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Goins.
Here.
Slater.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
Ledford.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Winters.
Here.
Beatty.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
It's fourteen present and none absent.
Thank you. We'll now move to the approval of the minutes. I entertain a motion. Second? Got it? Okay. Any discussion? No discussion. Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Before we go to the mayor, I would like to welcome Dr. Cash, Director of Schools here, and Doug Berry, and Mike Griffin from the Chamber of Commerce, Matt Bentley from Johnston Farms is also here. You're all welcome. Mayor Davis, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to use my time for a mayor's report to make, go ahead and make my comments concerning the growth plan that is later on your agenda this evening. The issue that I hear from our constituents more and more frequently is the need for cities and the county to prepare and plan to grow responsibly into the future. Updating the growth plan is one way we can work together in local government to do just that. Almost a year ago, I called for the Growth Plan Coordinating Committee to be reconvened for a third time in our county's history for the purpose of revising the twenty-year urban growth boundary in Bradley County. There's been significant growth since it was initially established in 2000, and more growth is still sent, and more growth still since it was amended in 2010. The time was right to make a change, and we're here today to do hopefully just that. On your agenda this evening is an important vote, one that will set the tone for growth for the next twenty years. We did not arrive here easily. Much work has been done by the members of the Growth Plan Coordinating Committee, the public, and members of this commission to bring us to this point. With each change of the map and the agreement before you today, we were careful to take your concerns and requests back to our partners at the city. They've been diligent in meeting to discuss those concerns and have shown significant good faith in our ability to come to an agreement locally. No one wants to see these issues decided by the state. I am confident that the new boundary you're considering today, along with the twenty-year written agreement presented alongside it, represents a good deal for the people of Bradley County and the residents of the cities of Cleveland and Charleston. My decisions, discussions, and negotiations with city leadership have been very fruitful, in my opinion, and I believe they do address most of the concerns raised by this commission. In the agreement before you, the city is agreeing to work with us on an unprecedented level. The questions raised by many of you in past discussions regarding growth, annexation, and planning are addressed. I'm proud of the work that has brought us to this point, and I'm proud of the agreement that you'll have a chance to vote on tonight. This agreement sets a new boundary for potential expansions of Cleveland and Charleston city limits through annexation. This agreement outlines the city's commitment to annexing, connecting roads and bridges during future annexation interlocal agreements, therefore assuming responsibility for the maintenance of those roads. This agreement establishes the creation of a joint fire tax committee charged with studying and determining a solution to the longstanding challenge of lost fire tax revenue to the county when annexation takes place. This committee of members from both city and county will also seek to address coverage concerns resulting from annexation. This agreement eliminates noncontiguous annexation by referendum outside the growth boundary, preventing islands of the city, like we see at Exit Thirty-Three, hopefully from ever happening again. This agreement even goes one step further and eliminates noncontiguous annexation by referendum inside the growth boundary when an interlocal agreement for services is approved. These are just a few points outlined in the latest version of the written annexation interlocal agreement that you will see in a substitute motion later this evening. These key points are for the life of the agreement, twenty years, and hopefully set a precedent to maintain beyond that when these issues are debated and discussed twenty years from now. I want to point out that these decisions have never been about annexation. In the state of Tennessee, forced annexation is not allowed. As a property owner, wherever you fall in the growth boundary after today, your property cannot be taken from you and annexed into the city without your permission. While these issues inform annexation decisions in the future, your property will not be annexed unless you, the property owner, request it to be. I want to be clear on that, because even today, there's still confusion about what is truly being decided on. Forced annexation has already been outlawed in the state of Tennessee. As I reflect on the work and discussions that have brought us to this point, I can see little reason to not support the updated growth boundary and written agreement with your vote of yes. Many of the questions and concerns raised by this commission in the past are answered and dealt with in the documents that you're considering. I encourage you to match the good faith cooperation being extended to you by the city and vote to approve the items before you. Again, thank you to the members of the Growth Plan Coordinating Committee for their diligent efforts in making a recommendation to this body. Thank you to Mayor Brooks and Mayor Lattimore for their leadership in these discussions. Thank you to the city manager, Joe Fivas, and the staff at the city for their hard work and willingness to work together towards an agreement. And thank you to the public for your feedback and input during this process. We're often criticized in local government for not properly planning for the future. Today is proof that is not the case. These decisions will have a lasting impact on our community. I believe your support today is in the best interests of the people we serve and all of Bradley County, a place we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the mayor? There being none, we'll move to the consent agenda. Look for a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Commissioner Hughes, second. Commissioner Thompson on the second. Any discussion? There be, there be no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. We'll now go to the reports from the committees and our districts. We'll start on our right with Commissioner Beatty, please.
Everything's well in the first district. I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Hughes.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing to report, other than thank the mayor for doing an excellent job with some negotiation with the city. If anyone's taken the time to read this annexation interlocal, interlocal agreement, I'd never dreamt that it would come out as well as it did. So, thank you.
Mr. Alfred, please.
Second district doing well, sir.
Mr. Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Volunteer Energy Cooperative plans to submit an application for three project area units in Bradley County under the current BEED Broadband Opportunity Grant. These three projects area, these project areas cover the entire county and include all unserved and underserved households that are not already included in another award. These awards are made, everyone in Bradley County will, if these awards are made, everyone in Bradley County will have broadband access. BEC is seeking a letter of support to strengthen their application. You have before you a letter of support from the Bradley County Commission. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve this letter. I put that into form of motion. Thank you.
Do I have a second, please? Commissioner Goins on the second. Open for discussion. There be no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Mr. Chairman, I just to add to that, I talked to the BEC gentleman the other day, I believe, out in the sixth district, they're already taking in subscrib, subscriptions for high speeds. So, the plan that we put in place years ago is starting to see some tangible benefits there. Last, Mr. Chairman, according to the budget calendar, this Thursday, the budget hearings will be here in the commission room. They originally were scheduled to start at one o'clock, but we had to change that to eleven o'clock. Welcome everybody to attend if their schedules allow. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Collins, please.
All's well in the third. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Winters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had the opportunity of celebrating the three-peat for the Barretts. It was a thrill to be there and see the accomplishment of these young ladies honored as so well by the county in general, but specifically for the county schools. Those young ladies reported themselves in a great way on the stage, their speeches that they gave at the end, the seniors, the honor of the coaches. It's not just about athletics here. It's about building young women and coaches pouring into them besides just the athletics. It's great to be a part of that day. It's well done. Sixty Highway is moving on. Some very positive things happening there, to a point of starting to actually put, put down the top cover on some of that road. And you can see what the engineers have been doing all these, almost three years for us in those neighborhoods, but trying to figure out what, what is this about? And what's that about? And you kind of see it all come together now. So, it's very nice to see that happening. And a little bit of traffic congestion around particularly the schools, but it's going very, very well. So, Seventh District's in good shape. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Gilbert, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would like to begin thanking God, and I want to reaffirm my deep love and compassion for Israel and its people. Over the past two weeks, I've experienced some of the most inspiring moments of my time as a commissioner, and all with the Bradley County school system. I had the privilege of attending several road shows and seeing firsthand the incredible things our students are doing and how they interact with their teachers and each other. It was nothing short of amazing. They're doing things I wished that I could have done when I was a kid. At North Lee, I was greeted with the most enthusiastic welcome from students cheering, welcoming us in. At the day's end, the best choir you ever heard perform. We visited several classrooms, and one of the particular, one in particular stood out to me was a teacher, and her students was spelling, and they was jumping up and down and clapping to each valve that they was clapping to. And you know she had been teaching them like this for a long time, because I mean, they was in rhythm and in sync. It was amazing watching these kids be taught. From robotics to garden, nature walks, outdoor, they had an outdoor eating court, and it was absolutely beautiful. And from an outdoor eating court to instructions with the, with the teachers teaching the kids, it was amazing. North Lee left a mark on me. I was like, man, this is amazing. I just want to, I just want to thank the teachers and everybody at North Lee for what they do for the students. I'm telling you, it blows my mind. We got leaders in schools now. And then we visited Walker Valley, where we was welcomed at the door by students. As I walked through the hall, I truly felt the presence of the Holy Spirit. I didn't know what to expect, but as we entered the library, the atmosphere was electric. The students and teachers were standing around shaking each other, shaking our hands as they had, as they had arranged the seating, one commissioner per table, and joined us by one, one teacher and one student. It, it gave us a chance to connect and share stories and realize how small the world this is. There was a moment I won't forget. Each students, each student stood up about their, and spoke about their journey, their accomplishments, and their directions. They felt God leading them. The young lady at our table began with thanking God before she ever introduced herself. The choir sang one of the most beautifulest gospel songs you've ever heard. They was absolutely just, it was beautiful. It was like a choir of angels singing. Together, to, to everyone who made this event happen, thank you. One thing I walked away with is this, we need to pay closer attention to our students. They are the leaders, and the teachers shape them, and the principals guide them. And we, as community leaders, are here to protect and support them. What I hope to leave you with today is that Bradley County has the best students, faculty in the world, and the ones, the one I met loved Jesus. I'm telling you, they was some kids there that was absolutely amazing. If your child is, I want you to know, I've had some people to ask me about, could their homeschool kid go to schools, because I was telling them about Walker Valley and the other schools. And their kids are homeschooling. They said, can we go to one of these schools? We've been homeschooling our kid. I said, absolutely. They'll take you on a tour. And so what I want to get across to you, if your kid's homeschooling, you're considering public schools, reach out to your district, reach out to your district's school board member. And District Four is ours is Josh Rogers. And I mean Josh Taylor's. Sorry, Josh. Josh Taylor is ours, and he's one of the best. And I guarantee Josh will take you through that school and, and let you tour Oak Grove and Taylor, or wherever you need to go. But we may be, we may not be perfect, but this, this system is as close as it gets. And finally, the icing on the cake, pooh-dum. The icing on the cake, Bradley Central High School. I am honored to witness their, their championship, their championship parade, and let me tell you, my heart swelled with pride. It was the best celebration that I have ever seen at Bradley High School, honoring a three-peat championship. And I got to, and I've got to say this, Rachel Goins gave one of the best speeches I've ever heard from a school board member. That's all for me, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing. Scott just finished us off.
Commissioner Slater, please. No, Goins, Commissioner Goins.
Fifth district doing well.
Commissioner Slater, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Chairman. The sixth district's doing well. I do want to announce tonight, the tire take back is going to be put on by KAB. That's Alan Mancy, the, and all the board members for KAB. And that will be May thirty-first at the Justice Center from eight AM to noon, and that's city and county residents. Thank you.
Yes. Commissioner Ledford, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sixth district is doing well. I have nothing to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to report tonight, but I, I do want to say to school board member Taylor, I'm thankful that's your calling in life. It's not mine, and you guys do the Lord's work over that school board. So, appreciate all that you guys and your whole crew do. So, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. There be no unfinished business. We'll move down to the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Winters. Commissioner Thompson on the second. Open for discussion. There be no discussion? Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. We'll move on along to Agenda Item A. Commissioner Slater.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a motion to approve the comprehensive growth policy coordinating committee recommendation, and that policy can be found on pages five through nine of your packet. And I place this in the form of a motion.
Do I have a second? Do I have a second? Goins on the second. Open for discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, since the Growth Committee met and voted this recommendation, we have received new information. Before you is a proposed annexation interlocal agreement between the city of Cleveland, city of Charleston, and Bradley County that we, we received on April third, 2025. The packet is stapled, and April third, 2025 is highlighted, highlighted on the top left of the front page. This twenty-year agreement includes the following key provisions. The city agrees not to pursue annexation by referendum both outside and inside the growth boundary. The city will annex roads and bridges serving as primary service routes to noncontiguous annexations. The city will annex county maintained roads when both sides of the street are located within the city for contiguous annexations. For contiguous annexations that create a new residential interest on, entrance onto a county maintained road, and where the annex road segment is contiguous to the city and exceeds a thousand linear feet, the city will annex and maintain the county road, provided it meets the city's standards for acceptance. The county shall approve and allow annexation of county maintained roads, as well as opened and unopened alleys by the city when using statutory annexation provisions within the county. The city of Cleveland shall annex and assume maintenance of Tasso Road Northeast from the current city limits through the last neighborhood driveway along that road. The city of Cleveland shall annex and assume maintenance of sections of Minus Road. The city of Cleveland and Bradley County will form a six-person fire tax committee to determine by August first, 2025, the best methodology to hold the county harmless for a defined period for any loss in fire tax. Until the committee reaches a majority recommendation, the city of Cleveland shall pay the current fire tax amount for any annexed property to the county for a period of one year from the annexation date. The proposed agreement is significantly different from the original plan, and I believe addresses every concern Chairman Cry and this body has expressed during the process. Thank you to the Growth Committee members, Chairman Cry, Commissioner Slater, Adam Lewis, and Mayor Davis for their efforts to negotiate this agreement. I appreciate the city of Cleveland's willingness to collaborate and compromise. Certainly, the, the spirit of this agreement is centered on working together for the benefit of all involved. I want to thank Joe Fivas, Mayor Brooks, and the city council as well. Too often, both we and our city colleagues face criticism for not working together. Today, we have an opportunity to demonstrate to all Bradley County residents that our goal is to serve the best interest of the entire community. We have two choices. One, we can stand by and allow this matter to go, go to the state, losing all negotiated elements of the proposed agreement, or we can accept this offer, which serves the best interest of all Bradley County residents, and resolve this issue fairly. Mr. Chairman, I offer a substitute motion to accept the map as presented and recommend by the growth, and recommended by the Growth Committee, and to approve the annexation interlocal agreement before you dated April third, 2025.
Thank you. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Winters.
Mr. Chairman, it's an honor for me to second this motion, and also commend those that have worked together on this, the mayor, our chair of the Growth Committee, this, this commission that spent a lot of time on this, Dr. Mr. Fivas, the mayor of the city, as well as their team, as they put this together. So, it's an honor to second this motion.
Thank you. I think Director of Schools, Dr. Cash, was also a member of the committee. I think we, missed her name. I'm sorry. Any, anyone else? There be no.
Are you called for discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
This is to, to leave it like it is, right? Or change it?
Commissioner Blake.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Crystal, real quick, just to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music. There's the map that we've heard a lot about. That's what's actually being sent up to the state and, and quote unquote, that's also what cannot be amended for a three-year period, if I understand it correctly. If we, when we read that, the map that's being voted on, and then there's this MOU, kind, whatever you want to call it, two different things, kind of, right?
Yeah, yes.
So, we understand the ramifications or the guidelines of the map, it can't be amended until three years from now, like it did back in 2010, 2011. But the MOU can be amended, right? It doesn't have that same criteria or that same restriction as a three-year period. I'm not saying that we will or anything like that. Just trying to make sure we understand that they're kind of two different things and have two different guidelines with respects to quote unquote, what can we do with it?
Yeah, the term for the interlocal agreement as drafted, now keep in mind, it's not signed yet, but assuming it, it gets signed, it says, "The parties hereby agree that this agreement shall continue for a period of twenty years or until the subsequent proposed amendment of the growth plan by any of the parties, whichever occurs first." So.
So inherently.
This would be, could only be changed if we also reopen this process and amend the growth plan at that same time.
So, for, it is in place for three years with that language, yeah?
At minimum, yes, at minimum. It could be up to twenty.
In order to change the MOU, you have to open up the, the map, so to speak.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Be no, someone?
I don't think so.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Alfred.
Yes.
Cry.
Yes.
Blake.
Yeah.
Collins.
Yes.
Gilbert.
Yes.
Thompson.
Mr. Chairman, I ask the Lord to forgive me, but I'm going to vote yes.
Goins.
He will, he will.
Goins.
Yes.
Slater.
Yes.
Mason.
Yes.
Ledford.
Yes.
Rogers.
Yes.
Winters.
Yes.
Beatty.
Yes.
Hughes.
Yes.
It's fourteen in favor and none opposed.
Thank you very much. Fourteen to zero. That's amazing. That's great. Now, we'll, I guess we'll send it back to the city and let, let them do their thing.
Can I, can I make?
Yes, go ahead.
One more statement. Let me say for, just for all of us to understand this, our board chair made a tremendous statement in a meeting that I observed with the committee in place, sharing the real position of the county commission in that body, and that is exactly what we've been looking at here. So, I think his leadership was critical in getting this moved to the step it's been, as well as those that have been identified already. So, I just want to make sure that's in place, that the presentation that was made, it was in the newspaper, calmed a lot of people down to understand that this was going to be a very good move for both city and county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right. We'll now move along to communication from the audience. I will recognize and allow five minutes to anyone wishing to speak. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Microphone, we'll need your name, sir.
I reside at 2040 Broomfield, South, South Spring. Commissioner Goins, Slater, fine representatives who have put up with, and Mr. Mason. My, I'm, I'm going to try to keep the timeline. This is, my problem is I've got a property. This is, my problem is I've got a property twenty forty five cross. Excuse me. Um, about a year ago, we started ever trying to get the yard. And I believe uh, Commissioner Goins, Slater, and Mason have spent countless hours court day but I believe it took about six months and five quarters. Took care of it. Praise all three. Would vote for him and okay. Um, that was a year ago. Um, there was a fire at the house and I thought we're finally lost, um, fun. No, they moved into a shed. No running water, no power. Um, August twenty-fourth, oh, excuse me, August twenty-four, October of twenty-four, November. Three times they've been arrested, burning. Um, the last six months, I know there's been at least six times where they've been arrested. The police and I know they know it because I reach out. God love them. Be patient. This has been going on for four or five years. This house, this nightmare. Afraid to bring my grandkids here. Every time they get arrested, they let them go. Arrested, they let them go. Right now. Hope y'all got some lead and your pencil. We need to do whatever we court day to see if we can't get the yard taken. And is there anything we can do about back to the house? It's, it's a shell. Can we condemn it? Can we board it up? Can we do any? To hopefully take, I would love to see it tore down. But at minimum, can we get it boarded up before somebody?
Crystal, is there anything?
They know.
So I believe this is the same property that we paid to have cleaned up.
Yes, it is. And I, I can't remember the exact amount. I believe it was roughly eleven or twelve thousand dollars. Um, this is the, so it has, this property went all the way through the process. Um, it was extremely difficult and challenging because the property owners are deceased. There are heirs, one of which I think.
Right, has committed suicide two weeks ago.
Yeah, and I believe her sons or grandsons, they're, they're, they're people that stay at the property that are tangentially related to the deceased. But we did take it all the way through the process. We actually violated sort of our own normal rules on this one and did clean it up even though there are people. And the reason why we don't normally do that is because this happens. Soon as you clean it up, if there's still people on the property, they will mess it back up again. Um, so that is what happened here. So this property went all the way through. Um, the only option we would have is to take it all the way through again, but unless we're willing to clean it up again, these, the, the heirs that we have found are not going to clean up the property. At some point, um, the lien we have, which we have a lien, um, does act when the property taxes get delinquent enough and it comes up for sale. Um, it, it would be sold through that process. The problem is, it's probably not going to be worth already what we've put into it. So at some point, you keep adding liens and the value of the property is less than what the liens are. So it, it's complicated.
Is there a way, is there a way to condemn the property?
No, we don't have condemnation in the county. We don't have authority to condemn in the county. We don't. You know, the only process we have is environmental court.
Commissioner Hughes, does your comment?
I don't know if it's still in place, but I remember, now I wish I could think of the TCA. Uh, several years ago, we passed a, a law that, well, a resolution, I guess you could say it's based off of state law where it was abandoned, dilapidated. That should cover that, but I know when I was doing the environmental stuff, I would go to the building inspector and let them tell me if it was dilapidate, dilapidate state at least.
It's going to qualify for that, but once again, we've got to go through the environmental court process, which we've already been through. So if, if, if we get to that point, the only thing we can do is because the property owners aren't going to clean it up, is get another order allowing us to go in and clean it up.
Understand.
So yes, that, that is in place.
I have a belief that if, if something was done, then all that's left is a tent and once it gets cold enough, they won't be even in that. That's just my.
I thought when it's down, they do.
I, quite honestly, I know the property you're talking about. I haven't. The only thing that I'd, and I'm not sure about that. I just brought that up because that's something that we used back years ago.
The three of you have been one.
From the Village Bake Shop?
Or Dunkin' Donuts?
I'll name it. I'll cook you a meal. Ribs, whatever. I just, it, it's, I really am a I don't want, I don't want my grandkids.
I understand. Yeah.
Caleb Cross. He's crazy. He's been arrested and y'all know what I'm talking about. Been arrested. Got dozens, dozens. He just got arrested possession of something. Two days later, he was out again. I thought he's gone. At least, you know, when he gets arrested, I don't see him for the other day, he was in the backyard picking a bird. I don't, cut the water line. I'm sure he cut the lock, which he's done numerous times.
Commissioner Blake.
Commissioner Blake.
Commissioner Blake has a question for.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Crystal, so, um, one, is it worthwhile? First of all, I mean, back up. The money that we spent already, it came out of the landfill fund, right? So I mean, that's set up for just that. So if we were to go and, not saying we are, but that would be obviously the same place we'd go to fund the cleanup again, the landfill, maybe fund one sixteen. But property taxes that they owe, that's when we quote unquote get it back. I mean, do we, is it worth going and seeing if they're behind on that or going through the process of, while they come to you, um, chance to record and all that?
Yes, um, I believe they are slightly delinquent possibly, but somebody was paying the taxes at one point in time. So.
For years, someone's been paying the taxes.
Until it gets to the point of.
So they're, they're paying the taxes and then living this kind of lifestyle.
Correct.
I, they're not paying the taxes.
Someone is. Someone, yeah.
Someone who doesn't want them in their, in their life to pay the taxes.
So when we, when we, if we, I'm saying, if, if we were to quote unquote, go through this process again and clean it up, is that add to the, uh, what's the word you use? The, uh?
It's a lien, yes.
The lien, I'm sorry, yeah, the lien. So that, that amount starts growing in that, I guess, let me get to the point. Does that act as more of an incentive for them to, to clean it up or to the, so whoever's paying the property taxes?
And no.
Can we make this amount so big?
No, um, unfortunately, it sort of has the opposite effect. Um, I, I doubt these, I, I doubt they will ever clean this property up. That's why I say the only, the only option we would have is to do it ourselves and then put the lien on. But the more, at, at some point, the lien is worth a whole lot more than the property is worth. And so then the property is upside down to us, which it probably could already be there, but certainly if we do it again, um, it just adds to it. So if I put another lien down, however much that would cost, and I have no idea unless we got an estimate.
Commissioner Winters, please.
One second. So, I mean, the, the, we just got property appraisals, um, and we've been hearing about those. Um, perhaps we go look at this, the property appraisal on this and would that affect that is whether it's worth it or not?
I don't normally consider that. Normally, when we, when we do it, we, if, if we're going to clean it up, we do, we put the lien down. It's, I, I can tell you in my time, we've never cleaned up a property twice. So because as I said, we don't normally do it unless there's no owner that can be found. And so there's nobody there to mess up the property. So if you tear it off, clean it up, it doesn't get back in the situation and ultimately it gets through the tax sale process because nobody's paying the taxes. This is an awful, a unique situation because you have someone paying the taxes, still living there, but also continuing to mess the property up.
And we, and we spent about ten, eleven thousand dollars cleaning it up last time.
I think it was close to twelve, but yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Commissioner Winters.
Can we, can we, this be presented to a judge? Can this be presented to a judge? And the judge require the owner to take care of this or be responsible for his grandchildren being harmed in that? And if it happens, it's his responsibility and he'll be, is there something a judge can do to get this guy's attention?
No, unfortunately not. We, we have, uh, we, we took this one all the way through the process. We tried to put down show cause orders. We tried to get them to come to court. I believe there, I'm guessing, I believe there are three heirs, maybe four. Um, but the one that continues to cause the issues with the property, I think is a grandchild. Um, so, so no. Um, we, we did everything that we could to the property owners. The, what I'm talking about is our ultimate recourse, which is what we've already done. You put a lien down on the property. You ultimately sell the property. So we've, we've taken this property all the way through that process. Could we take it again? Yes.
But if we presented what we've already done to a judge and say that, that there are children involved here. There are your children, grandchildren, who we're talking about here, that can be harmed by this not at least being torn down. Can a judge not require the owner to do that?
Well, certainly, it's just they don't listen, Commissioner Winter. So yes, we can tell them to, but they don't usually listen. So yeah, there's been multiple orders requiring them to comply, requiring them to, to get the property in compliance. And unfortunately, they have ignored those orders. So.
In the county, is that, is that a state thing or is that, is that? No, I know they can do it in the city. I mean, is that a, is that a state issue or, or just, is that just our thing?
We have never, uh, adopted any kind of minimum standard housing, which in order to do that, that's a whole nother conversation. You have to adopt the County Powers Act, which you can do. But if you do that, then you can have what's called minimum standard housing, which then allows you to go in people's houses and do condemnation, um, like it's done in the city. The, the first, if, well, the first part would be the County Powers Act. And then the next part would be you establish minimum standard housing, which then allows building officials to go in homes and check it and see if it's
It's a shell. It's burnt almost to the ground.
Yeah, I think in this situation, it's clearly dilapidated. I don't think you have to go in this structure in this situation, but in, in.
I got photos. Who wants?
Yeah, it's. You, you put down orders that say the property is condemned and no one's allowed to live there. Um, would these people comply with that order? I
No.
Your, your guess is as good as mine, but I suspect the answer is no.
And I'm not afraid to go to jail. That's the part, they go to jail and then they get out. I just want the house tore down.
Commissioner Hughes, please.
I, everything that we have spoke about has to go to court. Judges, the one that has to deem what happens with that property. There's, none of us can make that choice up here.
Can I go? I mean, what do I need to do? Tell me where to start. Who do I need to talk to?
I think you can sue anybody. But, um, I know it has to go through the court. We can't just go over and take it out. I will say that I do believe in property rights for people. I, I think it's just do what you wish on the property, but obviously, when you go in your neighborhood, I know it well. And this one house sticks out like a sore thumb and it's affecting everyone's property values around it. Well, it gives that same person the rights to harm everyone else around them just because they want to live a certain way.
Burnt. Has it not? Bradley County Rescue Fire.
I, I agree with you. I'm just telling you that the judge is the one that has to deem all the, they're the ones that has to make this order.
I have, I have no problem writing them a citation. I don't, I won't have a signature this time, but we can take it up with Judge Morgan and I don't, I don't, I don't have a, I don't have a problem at all. We, we went through everything the last time.
We'll, uh.
I'm just asking, I mean, what would y'all do if it was a cross, you know? This was a cross.
We will, uh, have Commissioner Mason do what he will, we'll, we're going, we're going to do it again, see how far we can go here and.
He's got my number.
Right. Appreciate you. We'll do what we can. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, everybody. And I, I mean that.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. All right. The communications from the audience is over. The announcements, uh, next meeting will be the, uh, fourteenth and we are adjourned.